Couldn't make that, it would be really good. Full on line. Distracting if you're, if there's any talking going on in the audience, the owl is going to pick you up as opposed to who needs to be focusing on. So, thank you so much for your kind attention. Thank you for being with this forum. My name is Kate Miller and I'm board member of the League of Women Voters Ashland Bayfield. Politic Board. Main objective is to promote the informed and active participation of all in government at all levels, especially locally. League is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government and always working on vital issues and concerns to our members and the public. This candidate forum is but one example of the important work that the League promotes. I want to thank the candidates for being here. Running and holding public office is an important part of our democracy. It's a huge commitment. Thank you for taking your part. Now, I'd like to introduce Allison Luterman, who is our moderator. And I want to thank Allison as well as all the volunteers here this evening. And our moderator and screener were chosen because they live outside the Ashland School District and therefore cannot be voting for this election. With that, I'll turn it over to Allison.
Good evening. I'm Allison Luterman, your moderator from League of Women Voters for Ashland and Bayfield Counties. This evening, we will be hearing from candidates for the Ashland School Board, Ashland School District School Board. Welcome to those who are listening on the phone, watching on Zoom, or here in person. During this forum, you will have the opportunity to assess four candidates running in the general election for the Ashland School Board. Your candidates are Scott Virchell, Darren Fredericks, Kelly Medei, and Jessica Pragolski. I'm going to provide some explanation as to our process. This will include opening statements, question and answer period, and closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute for their answer to the question. When a candidate has 30 seconds to go, our timekeeper Linda will hold up a 30-second warning sign, followed by a times-up sign at the end. The candidate may complete their sentence, but then must stop speaking. Now, we know that time limits are frustrating, so I'll mention why we have them. First, the League is diligent about treating all candidates equally. Second, if we don't have time limits, then we don't treat the audience fairly as we want to get to as many audience questions as we can. We know our format is not perfect, but we hope it strikes the right balance. Randomly drew candidate names out of a hat, and that determined their seating and their order for opening statements. After opening statements, the candidates answer your questions. Some questions were already emailed to us, and we appreciate very much all the people who took their time in advance to email us questions. Kate Miller has been compiling all those questions for us. In-person audience members may write their questions on a card. If you need a card, please hold up your hand, or if you need a pencil, please hold up your hand. Or if you have a completed card and you're ready for it to be picked up, a League member will help you. If you are attending virtually, questions can be sent along electronically during the forum to the email that was listed in the forum quiet. And I'm just going to remind the online audience of what that email address is. It's ashlandforum@abcleaguevoters.org. That is ashlandforum, F-O-R-U-M, at A-B-C League, L-E-A-G-U-E, voters, and V-O-T-E-R-S dot org. Our question sorter, Kate Miller again, will be screening the questions that come in online. And has already screened the questions that we have received for defamatory contact, which is not allowed, and for duplication. We'll get to as many questions as we can, but we usually run out of time before we run out of questions. We always get so many thoughtful questions, so we apologize if yours isn't asked. I will read the question. A candidate may ask to have it repeated. The candidates will take turns going first. However, if a question is to a specific candidate, that candidate will answer, and then the other candidates may answer or may pass. After everyone has responded to a question, the candidates may ask for an additional one minute for a rebuttal comment if they desire. And I've already advised the candidates, if they so desire, they need to get my attention by raising their hand. After that, each candidate may have that one minute for the rebuttal. But as you see, when we go along, most of the time rebuttals are not requested. So, if, and I would also like to know, if a rebuttal was directed to a specific candidate, then that specific candidate may ask for 30 seconds for what is called a surrebuttal, or a reply. After the question and answer period, each candidate will make one-minute closing statements in the opposite order to the order that applied for opening statements. We plan to finish up about 7:30. So now, we are going to be hearing through the forum candidates for the two-minute opening. And tonight, we will start with Darren Frederick. Mr. Frederick, you may give the in.
Good evening, and thank you for having us and providing us the opportunity to get to know one another. My name is Darren Fredericks. I'm 53 years old. I grew up in a nearby Drummond, Wisconsin, graduating from there in 1988. After earning degrees in communication and journalism, political science from the University of Minnesota Duluth, I accepted a position at Breding and have been in Ashland ever since, over 30 years. I have a variety of educational, occupational, civic, and community experience, which will allow me to be a successful member of this school board. My education has suited me well in my career at Breding as the inside sales coordinator, allowing me to communicate openly and freely while leading group projects and working with a variety of other divisions in the company. I am trained in world-class manufacturing, and I'm a lean lead at Breding. I have led many events and have extensive training and experience in working with teams and building relationships. Throughout my 30-plus years of living in Ashland, I have been a volunteer in a variety of organizations, including the Essential Health Patient Family Advisory Council, the Facilities Improvement Team, and several years of coaching youth baseball, basketball, and soccer. My wife Teresa and I have three sons, 25, 20, and 10, who all went through the school district with our youngest, a fifth grader at LSLC.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. The time is up. Kelly Medei?
That's Laura here. Thank you. Hi, I'm Kelly Medei. I am running for school board for the second time. I ran last year and lost. That's a tough bill to swallow for somebody that is competitive. But I'm back out here because I am passionate about the Ashland School District and the direction that it's going. I have three children in the district. Next year, I will have one in each school, actually, a 15-year-old, an 11-year-old, and a seven-year-old. I am the Ashland County Child Support Director for Ashland County, and I've been in that position for 15 years. My children are Bad River Tribal members, so I feel like I bring a good voice for all kids in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Medei. Our next candidate is Jessica Pragolski.
Hi, my name is Jessica Pragolski, and I might be familiar to some of you as I was a board member for two terms. I was elected into my first term. I ran unopposed, so I think I went in a little naive. I did then run again because I felt like we were really moving in a good direction. This is actually the fourth time my name will be on a ballot because I did lose an election during 2019, I guess, 2020, and a COVID pandemic chaos that was occurring. But I'm still very interested in the direction that our district is going. I've seen so many positive things happening here as my children came through the district. They're both now college age, but I still want to stay involved and find ways to just promote all the positive things that this community has to offer, our school district being really at the top of that. And knowing that having a strong school board and good leadership really determines the success of our students. So, I just, I'm glad to be here again. Thank you, Ms. Pragolski. And Scott Virchell.
Hi, thanks for coming. Thanks for having me. I come from a family of educators, people who believe that education is a keystone to our democracy. There could be no freedom, no liberty without citizenry that has the knowledge and interest to engage, support, oversee, and serve the governance of our society. We educate our children so that they may maintain this system and benefit from the hard work of our ancestors. My family moved to Ashland in 2005. Both our kids graduated from Ashland High School. I worked in local school districts for the last 15 years. Before that, I worked for non-for-profit organizations with companies supporting non-for-profit organizations. Being the person in charge of making the technology work in all departments of these organizations has given me broad knowledge of how non-for-profit and educational organizations work from all angles. I believe this puts me in a rare position of being able to quickly understand any issue which might come before the board. The values that I hold because of my family background and the knowledge that I have for my work makes me a very good candidate for this position.
Thank you, Ms. Virchell. So now, we are going to begin with our question and answer period. The first question will be directed or replied to Darren Fredericks. So here's the question. What motivates you to serve on the school board?
Well, first of all, it's about the kids, you know? I'd like to make it, help make it the best it can be. I think since Superintendent Prater got here, we've turned a corner. I think we're looking forward to that. I want to experience, I'm very experienced and willing to learn, to step up and support the community through building together with cooperation amongst the population throughout Ashland, combining the community and businesses around Ashland.
Thank you, Darren. Next will be Kelly Medei.
I'm motivated to run for school board because I have children in the district and I'm a member of this community. I feel like, like Mr. Frederick said, since we have a new superintendent, our school is definitely going in the right direction, and I'd like to be a part of that. I believe that after COVID, we do have students that are struggling with a multitude of issues that have to be addressed. And it all starts with our school budget and who we have on our school board to represent our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next will be Jessica Pragolski.
My motivation for being here is to allow myself to continue to be a member of a board that functions at a high level. I know through the years of being on a school board and receiving a lot of training as to what that means, there's a lot of correlation between student success and very high functioning, high-level school boards. We have an important job, and that job is to really set the tone for the district, but that falls in the way of staying at that high level. And I think it's really important that during times of change, we have a lot of new people coming into our district, and just to have some consistency, understanding where the district has been will help us to move forward.
Thank you, Jessica. Scott Virchell.
Yes, again, I have a real passion for public education. I instilled in me by my family. I think it's very important. I think my kids got a good education here in the district. I'd like to see the district continue to provide a quality education for our community. I've been on boards. I enjoy the work. I feel like it's time I could raise my hand and do some good, hard work for this community on this board. I'll do the best job I possibly can supporting this district.
Thank you, Scott. All righty, here we are at question number two, and Kelly, you will be answering the question first. What is the primary role and responsibility of school board members?
I feel like the school board, the primary role is to govern our community's public school. We represent the interests of those that live within the district. And being a member of the board, you're creating and adopting district policy, hiring the superintendent, attending board meetings, and taking actions that both serve students and align with the priorities of the district. So basically, I am here to serve the students and our community in the best way I possibly can. And being part of the board and being able to have open communication with them and work together, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. The most important role of school boards obviously is to kind of oversee, like I said, at that high level. I think there's often confusion about what school boards do, and having had a lot of experience and training in what school board members' responsibilities are, I'm able to kind of jump into this role with a pretty high knowledge of that. But, you know, it's as simple as hiring, evaluating, and maintaining a relationship with the superintendent. We are responsible to set the tax levy and the budget, which is a huge job, and it takes tons of research to get to that point. So really, you know, doing your research, spending the time reading the materials, and then going above and beyond to find your own resources out in the world. I think it's very important that we stay on top of policy. It's not always the most fun or entertaining thing to spend hours on, but it really is the role that the board can most effectively help and assist our students and our families because policy is really what directs the entire thing.
Thank you, Jessica. And Scott, the question is to you.
Absolutely, the school board does this internal work of working with the district staff. But it is a true representative position. Communication with the community, I think, is very, very important. But in both ways, you, I would get information from the community, but with, after doing work with the board, it's about selling our decisions back to the community. The community needs to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it. And if we can sell it to the community, then I think that makes sense that we're doing the right thing.
Thank you, Scott. And Darren.
Okay. I feel the role of, the role of the school board is to listen to the community and respond back, taking into consideration everything that they want and need, and to develop and maintain policy, financial stability, and keep the students safe and provide an enriching environment, supporting oversight of the budget, and keeping the students first in mind and staff. Employee retention is a big thing in the whole world lately. That's a big one for the school board to try to find a way to keep employees of all areas of the school district happy and work with the superintendent and other board members to keep the ball rolling in the direction that I feel it's been going the last couple of years. So, first and foremost, keep the students first.
Thank you, Scott. I think Darren. All right, the next question, Jessica, you'll be the first to respond. What are the top needs of the school district, and how will you address them?
I would say the needs of the district change year to year, but I would say most consistently, the needs are providing safe environment for our students, best practices, places that our staff and our community members want to be in, feel safe, and participate in. Obviously, the world of education is always shifting and changing, so being nimble, being prepared and ready to research and do the work to find what are the best ways that you're going to move forward. Listening to the community is a big part of what we do as board members because we are part of the public and we are part of that community. But interpreting what people are saying and helping to inform our administration of concerns that may be arising. There are so many facets to being a board member that it takes time to, I think, hone in on what are those best practices or needs because you might see one fire over here, and there's a whole other fire burning. So, just being aware.
Jessica.
Scott, could you repeat the question?
I certainly will. What are the top needs of the school district, and how will you address them?
Well, I think a number of us have been talking about students and how important the students are. And I think that obviously, that's true. But the students get their sense of security, and they get their education directly from teachers. And I think teachers are really, really important in this. And making sure that our teachers are happy and respected and able to do the work that they need to do is really, really important. I know that we've been losing a lot of staff recently, and I think that needs to change.
Darren.
Repeat the question, please.
Yes. What are the top needs of the school district, and how will you address them?
I would say that the success, well-being, and safety of the student body is the number-one priority. This encompasses many facets. I believe it all begins with communication, common sense, and logic. From the retention and inclusion of the teachers, staff, and administrators to dealing with the behavioral issues at all levels of the district, a strong community parent involvement is key to success. This will attribute to the stability and continuity of the district along the programs and changes to evolve and grow, rather than changing from one ideology to the next.
Thank you. Thank you, Darren. And Kelly, can you repeat the question?
Yes.
What are the top needs of the school district, and how will you address them?
I feel like the top needs of our school district is, again, our students and our staff. There's a lot of students that don't feel like they belong in our district, and I have learned that from being on the Strategic Planning Committee. And that is one problem that we have in this district that we have to address. Students have mental health needs, and we need to retain the great teachers that we have and staff that we have because there are some really good ones. However, a lot of that comes with, starting with the funding for public education, which is not good in the state of Wisconsin right now. We have to start there because if we don't have the funding to do it, we can't do any of these things for our children or our community. So I would be a voice that's down in Milwaukee and down in Madison and doing the things and attending anything I can to learn more about how I can advocate for our community up here down with our legislature.
Thank you. All right, for this next question, Scott, you're going to be going first. What do you think the role of technology is in school?
Wow, am I the right person to get that? Well, there's a couple of different directions for that. Technology for teachers and providing instruction and technology for students and receiving that instruction and learning about technology. I'm a huge proponent of teaching our kids about technology. I've been telling everybody that I can think of recently that the current state of technology is very similar to what manufacturing used to be. We've got great organization like Breding in the community. We get money in the community by Breding selling stuff away from the community. Teaching our kids technology allows them to live here and work for communities elsewhere. And that money then comes here locally. It's like the new manufacturing. I think we should be really pushing teaching technology in our school.
Thank you, Scott. Darren.
Repeat the question, please.
What do you think the role of technology is in school?
When used correctly, technology is beneficial to the world. I believe that throughout the pandemic, we utilized technology the best we could. It may not have turned out the best for the students, depending on the support they had at home, but it did allow some educational time spent. So, that technology was good. I think technology, as far as Ashland goes, needs to be upgraded in the community. I think we should teach not only technology in school. So, like Scott said, we can do some hybrid and remote studying and learning and different jobs and get paid city wages to live in Ashland where we choose to live. Technology comes in many forms, whether it would be the CNC programs at WIT or Northwood Tech, excuse me, or in the high schools. So, technology is a little broader than one minute for me. If you know me, it is fine. So, that's what I have.
Thank you, Darren. Kelly? Repeat the question. Yes. What do you think the role of technology is in school?
I feel like technology is extremely important. It's the way of the world. It's the way we're heading, and all students definitely need to learn it. And we need to, especially at the middle school and high school level, need to incorporate it into our education and upgrade all of our system. But I also am a big proponent for, at the younger age, not as much technology as sometimes they have. I have kid, a son who, he gets on technology, and it's not good for him. And I know there has to be other kids out there like that also. So, as much as I love technology and we need it and I support it 100%, I also support pen and paper and getting kids active and off of the Chromebooks a little bit and doing some more engaging activities.
Thank you, Kelly. And I believe Jessica, you're next.
Well, technology, when we're talking about this generation, most students in our schools have been, they've never lived in a world where an iPhone or an iPad wasn't part of their day-to-day. So obviously, that is going to be a part of the way that they interact and interface with the world. I think we've done a good job of integrating technology into our schools, and that was one big piece of the referendum that was very important and maybe went unseen, but did put us in a good position to move through the pandemic with a little bit of grace. But I do see that we have students who struggle with the balance, and I think it's our role as the instructors or as the adults that make the decisions to help these students find good ways to balance social media and the pressures that are on our students. We have some of the most staggering statistics about depression and just very, very scary things happening with our young people. And I think we need to also balance technology with empathy, and there's a lot of study around the importance of that.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, we're moving on to our next question. And Darren, you're up first on this one. How will you ensure that all voices, including staff, students, and community are at the table when making important decisions?
I would do my best and our best to make sure there's open lines of communication with the community, whether it would be through Facebook or some town-type meetings or things that we can have, or things that we are going to be approaching. So we don't find out they don't like it after the vote. That's got to be the most frustrating part. Information is key. If you've been watching the two-minute Ashland updates, those things are awesome. You should continue to do those so we know what's going to happen in the future. That's probably enough.
All right. Thank you, Darren. Kelly? Certainly. How will you ensure that all voices, including staff, students, and community are at the table when making important decisions?
I think I'll do that just by listening to people. I'm a pretty easy person to talk to, easy person to find. And I'm at all of the schools all the time or volunteering to help with something my kids are in. So I attend the homeschool meetings. I try to get on committees that the school has and ensuring that we, like Darren said, continue with the two-minute update and making sure that we're emailing and calling the district is when things are going on in the school and letting parents know what's happening. And I'm not, I'm a person who's willing to bring anything forward to the board if I was on it that anyone in the community or a student or a teacher brings to me. I'm happy to talk openly about it. So I think I would be a good person to do that.
Thank you, Kelly. Jessica.
Well, this question gives me pause for a second because as a board member, it's not always our role to be that listener or that person. I would lean very heavily on, and I'm going to look over to that side of the room. And, you know, the superintendent's role is to provide an environment where his administration, his teachers, the staff that he supervises feel comfortable to bring forward information, especially when it's important and pertains to the safety, the well-being of our students. Often, that road can get a little muddied, and board members will experience people who want them to fix a problem. fix a problem and bring it to the superintendent for them, and it's really important to learn, you know, to to ask that person to go through the proper chain of command, and that's not always an easy thing because that's not the answer that they want from you. They want you to say, I'll take care of that situation for you, and that is an inappropriate answer. But we can always listen. We can always be aware and just pay attention. We're all members of this small community and we're all tied together, so.
Thank you, Jessica. Scott?
Yeah, I I feel like it's a representative position and and we should keep open lines of communication with the community. And I will do my best to do that. My experience of school board meetings is that the community can talk, but at that point, it's kind of the things have already been decided. So having some communication channels into the into the system prior to that meeting where where things are being voted on is is really important. And I would make myself available for that kind of communication.
Thank you, Scott. We're moving on to the next question. For this question, Kelly, you'll be responding first. Here's the question. Do you support in-school learning and activities that incorporate the history, culture, language and perspective of our Ojibwe tribal neighbors? Why or why not?
I do. I support it fully. It's, that's, that's my family. That's who I live with and who I celebrate holidays with and what we teach in our homes. So I definitely support it. We have a huge population of Ojibwe tribal members in our community, and it's important that we teach our children and our teachers and our community the history and the culture that surround those individuals because otherwise we get things where people aren't accepted in school or they're different because of certain things. So it is very important that we teach the culture and the history so that they learn it from a very young age and their families learn it. So that all of our students can be together happily and inclusive moving forward.
Thank you, Kelly. Jessica?
Well, one of the things that I truly love and think is a real advantage of our our school district is the diversity that we have in our our location or proximity, which does place us near a reservation and allows us to have a lot of opportunities to understand and see cultural differences, but also a lot of similarities. And I personally am a student of history. I love history. I chose to attend Northern College partly because of the location and did choose to study a lot of Native American history in my path, but I feel like we have this great beautiful opportunity for us to see that we have a lot of common qualities, learn from each other, share those wonderful traditional stories and ways that are part of this this land that we live on. Not all of those are easy stories and there will be difficult conversations, but I think honesty and truth always goes a lot, a lot farther than we try to avoid what maybe isn't uncomfortable or true.
Thank you, Jessica. Scott?
Absolutely. I, I mean, Bad River is our community. We should absolutely be learning about their history and their culture and that's it. Yes.
And?
Yeah, yeah, of course. It's it's a real easy answer. Of course it is. People aren't born judgmental. They're kind of created that way. And if you catch them young enough, so you teach them kindness and compassion and love and respect, that's what's going to mold them into be the people that you hope the heck they turn out to be someday. Like my mom always used to say, just be kind. It is, it's not a hard skill to have. You need to do that. Empathy, compassion, respect, kindness, all inclusivity of all, everything should be taught as little as you can. And 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 people are, those aren't special needs. Those are basic human needs that people need to thrive. It's it's a pretty simple concept, and I don't know in the last 230 years or so, this place got so screwed up that you just can't be kind to everybody that you hang out with. It's pretty simple.
Thank you, Darren. We'll move on to the next question. The first person to answer this question will be Jessica. Will you pledge to vote against any measure to ban books or curriculum for depicting LGBT people, families or relationships?
Will you read that question?
I certainly will, just because I'm curious about this.
Will you pledge to vote against any measure to ban books or curriculum for depicting LGBT people, families or relationships?
Well, I would never pledge in a situation like this to vote one way or another. I would always vote on an informed decision, but this question in my mind is kind of obsolete. We live in a world where we have a lot of variety of people and we need to support the people of all variety, and I don't think we need to start deciding about one book or another being available to someone to read. I think the idea of banning books is a little I mean, to me, it's a little silly. I think if I knew that a book was banned, I'd probably go get that book and read it right away. I think we need to let people be exposed to as many different things throughout their educational and age appropriate, obviously. But no, I I would never support him in a book.
Thank you, Jessica. Scott?
Yeah, making any sort of a pledge rubs me very wrong. But there is no sorry, there's no reason to even think about banning a book. We have staff who are highly trained in our libraries who pick the materials that they provide. They know the students. And I would leave it up to those professionals to determine what books which students get. There's no need for the board to get in that mix.
Thank you, Scott. Darren?
I also agree. I don't think banning of any books would be what the school should end up doing. A lot of times it needs to be age appropriate. I I believe that to me is important. I think the parent should have some involvement in what, what and when their kids are ready, whether it's the fifth grade talk from Dr. Mourning or the books that they choose to check out from the library. I wouldn't, I don't think, I agree with Jessica. We talked about it earlier. I would go and get that book. So in in that respect, it's good that people are curious enough to want to go learn why something is being banned to educate themselves. So by banning books creates an opportunity for people to go out and learn what the world seems to think is correct or not correct. When all in all, it should be everyone's personal choice and decision on what they read and how they educate and learn.
Thank you, Darren. And Kelly, could you repeat the question? Certainly. Will you pledge to vote against any measure to ban books or curriculum for depicting LGBT people, families or relationships?
Again, I I like the rest of the candidates. I don't want to sit up here and pledge something without all the facts around why that would be coming to us. But I I don't support banning any kind of book. I, like Scott said, we have professionals to choose those books, but I feel like this question's kind of more about the LGBTQ community. And I support that. Our, we need to learn about it. We need to support them just like we support our powerlifting team going to state. We should be supporting our LGBTQ community just the same. All people, all the kids deserve to be treated equally.
Thank you, Kelly. We're moving on to the next question, and for this question, Scott, you will be answering first. What is your understanding of the doctrine of separation of church and state? And how strongly do you feel about separating the church and state?
Understanding the doctrine, I guess I know what it means to me. Faith is a very personal thing. And I don't see a reason for the state, as in the government, to get involved in dictating such personal stuff in the community. As a public institution, we need to embrace everything. And to not some focus on one faith. I guess that's, that's it.
Thank you, Scott. Darren?
Can you repeat the question?
What is your understanding of the doctrine of separation of church and states? And how strongly do you feel about separation of church and state?
I feel boundaries are required in pretty much all aspects of life and school, so you know where you need to funnel your energies. I think faith is a very personal and private choice. I don't think anyone should be told what to pray for or or believe in. I think we need to be considered and inclusive of everyone. I, if you're talking about, to me, the pledge of allegiance is something that I I don't think is faith-based. I I don't know if they still say that in school. I, we did when we were kids. I I hope that they still do. That was the closest I would get to breaching church and state, I believe. But it sounds like they're doing a good job of that, so. It's a personal, private choice, and there's a lot more choices now than there was 40 years ago when I went to school. So that's what I offer.
Kelly?
My understanding is basically, are you bringing church into in our, in the role we're playing into the school? I don't think we should. I think, again, religion is a private, is a private thing that you do with your family or whatever it is that you believe in. Not everybody believes in praying. I mean, some kids, when they have a bad day, they go home and they smudge themselves or they smudge their bedroom. Some kids, when they're having bad feelings, they might kneel down and pray. Whatever you do at home is great. And if a kid in a classroom feels the need to sit on a beanbag and say a prayer, so be it. But not all kids should have to do it. That's a choice made by their families, and that should, it shouldn't be in the school.
Thank you, Kelly. Jessica?
Yeah, I I feel like I'm being quizzed on the doctrine, and I don't know that I can do a very good job of explaining it. I do think that in regards to what we're discussing here, which I'm assuming is a school setting, we're trying to create a place of inclusion. We're trying to create a safe place where students feel welcome of any belief, religion background. Young people don't have always a full understanding of what a religious belief would would really mean or be, and maybe that creates some tension or difficulty for a particular student, and I don't think that that is the environment that we're trying to create in our, in our schools. I think learning about religion is very important. I think learning and understanding the differences of cultural beliefs that people may hold. I think that is a place that the school can play a role. But as far as creating like a policy or a rule that we're going to do one specific thing, I think that that is a dangerous kind of route to take and you will upset one group or the other.
Thank you, Jessica. We're moving on to the next question, and Darren, for this round, you will be answering first. What are your thoughts on school district programs for social, emotional learning?
Did my time start already or do I wait?
I haven't started yet.
I think some, there we go. Social emotional behavior issues are coming back to the need of the child. I think that people are better taught when they are feeling accepted and when they can thrive and love and safe in their environment. We need to concentrate on them. Mental health is the, probably the biggest issue. Since I've had kids, it's really popped up in the whole world. We need to support those kids and offer those the services that they need. We we need to make sure that they have the fundamentals on which to grow. There are local resources that we need to consider. It's not always the teacher's job to talk about the social, emotional behaviors of kids. They need what time they can to teach, but I I think we need to put the student first, and if they have the needs, we can find the resources to get it for them.
Thank you. Kelly, could you repeat that? Certainly. What are your thoughts on school district programs for social, emotional learning?
My thoughts are that they're extremely important. I don't think a student can go into a classroom and learn math or science or how to read if their social and emotional well-being is not there. Today, especially in today's age, mental health is huge. We don't have the resources up here that we need. We need more funding for it, which again goes back to, we have to work with our legislators to try to get more public school funding for these things. But we have to have programs like that in place because students that are not socially, social and emotionally well, they can't learn the basic subjects that we're testing them on. And if you have a classroom of 20 and six kids are not emotionally or socially well, it's affecting the entire class and you can't, a teacher can't teach those kids either. So it affects the whole, it affects everybody. We definitely need to have support for that.
Thank you, Kelly. Jessica?
Well, I would, I would start by just saying that, you know, during my time on the school board in my previous terms, we were recipients of a very large grant. It was due to the mental health of our students and very, very sad state of affairs that we were in. During that time, we had resources and we were able to really focus on thinking about how would we create a program and how would we approach this and, you know, creating staff that understand what trauma-informed care is, understand what some of our students are dealing with outside of the classroom. Some of those skillsets that we as adults can learn and then share with our students, coping mechanisms, meditation, mindfulness, a lot of the things that are already in place that our students aren't actually actively doing and often will like initiate and really seem to respond to. I think that that sets us apart from a lot of other districts that have not yet approached this this topic. So in such depth.
Thank you, Jessica. Jessica?
I agree with my colleagues up here where the the social emotional well-being of our students is is direct correlation to the rest of the the classroom being able to learn and the teachers level of stress and ability to do their jobs. You don't necessarily want to throw money at stuff, but we need support in our schools for students who are having problems that don't tax the teachers.
Thank you, Scott. All right, now we are moving on to a new question, and for this round, Kelly will be responding first. Should board members be concerned with policy only?
No. I think policy is a large part. We have to have policies so that we can run our school effectively. But to me, that's But to me, that's, that's not, that's not all the board members should be concerned about. We need to advocate for our community, advocate for our students and the needs and the goals that they have or want to see our district go in. And that might mean being at a school board meeting, and if a topic comes up, opening up that for discussion. Like Scott had said earlier, the public gets three minutes and nobody responds to them. But as a board member, if that topic is being discussed, it's my responsibility to represent my community members and the students and open up a discussion about that, learn a little bit more, talk about it a little bit, throw ideas off each other. It's not just about creating policy.
Thank you, Kelly.
I served on our policy committee for the six years that I was on the board, and policy changes, it often is driven by a community event or it's driven by something in like a larger news story and occurrence. Often there's a precedent that's set, and those are often the times where we really need to pay attention. A lot of policies will maintain and probably never change because they're just out of practicality. But there are things that arise in our society that cause a need for a policy change, and that might mean that we really need to dig in and spend some time really thinking about how does this decision that we're going to make to handle something one particular way, how does that affect all students? How is that going to affect their families? So policy on the surface, it seems like maybe just the set of rules that we wrote down or a bunch of words on paper, that policy needs to be driven by good decision-making and informed discussion. And that doesn't always happen in a full board meeting.
Thank you, Jessica.
Could you repeat the question?
Should board members be concerned with policy only?
Policy is very important, and I think it's probably a very large part of a school board, school board's job, but school boards are also tasked with oversight and governance of the administration. And I think that's very important. The board hires and fires the superintendent. And having the information that you need and staying in touch with how that's going and, and communicating amongst the board about in an oversight of, of those functions of the school district, I think are very important.
Thank you, Scott. And Darren.
I don't, I don't believe policy should be the only thing that school board considers, right? It's, it's such a broad scope, you know, policy. What is policy? Well, you've got a handbook that's about this big. So, I mean, yes, you can go spend days going through that. But I still think it's about going to the community, communication, active listening, bringing things back to constantly improve. That, that, that's what we need to do. Times change, information change, technology changes, student changes. There's so many changes. I mean, if you go back to the constitution back in the day, things aren't the same anymore. You have to grow and evolve. And I think the, the school board has to be the leaders of the listening who brings it back for policy change, not take it upon themselves to make the policy changes. We're not up here representing us or our household. We're up here representing the community, and we need to make sure we get that information to make solid choices and make good decisions on which we can move forward. Just because it's policy doesn't mean it is good for 20 years ago and today, so.
Thank you, Darren. We'll move on to our next question. For this question, Jessica will be responding first. What is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration?
Well, I will say from experience that there are occasionally differences of opinion on the board. And I think that that's a healthy thing. I think the reason that you have seven members of a board is because we all bring and contribute different ideas to that conversation. Sometimes those meetings are long, and sometimes we have really difficult things that we have to address that don't have a one right answer. So I think you treat each other with respect. You have your discussions. You might have differences of opinion, but when you leave that boardroom, you're a united front. You are a united group. If you make a decision as a board, whether or not you fully believe and endorse that decision, you stand by the decision of your board and you respect your fellow board members. We're all kind people that are here for the right reasons. So I think that it's usually a pretty easy thing to do, but there is moments where it becomes very difficult and you just move through it with respect.
Thank you, Jessica.
Can you repeat the question?
I can. What is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration?
Well, like Jessica said, there, there are a number of members in the board, so that there are a number of opinions and a number of people coming from different aspects of the community in a conversation. So if there's an issue and you're having a conversation, the point is to try to convince your peers of your point. Take a vote after a good long conversation, and you stand by the board. Or it's a democracy, board makes a decision, that's the decision. It doesn't mean that maybe next year you come back and you bring that back up again. It didn't go your way. But if the board makes a decision, then it makes a decision. That's the way democracy works.
Thank you, Scott.
Repeat the question, please.
What is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration?
Simply, I, I believe it's open communication. Communication is a balance. It's a yin and a yang. It's a balance between listening and assertion. And you need to have an open mind and an open heart when you go in. And don't be so stubborn that you're not going to allow other things to come in. Opinions vary, backgrounds vary, educational experience varies. Everyone is different. Everybody, no life is the same. So you know what? It's my way, and that's the way I was taught, but that doesn't mean it's the right way or the best way. We, we need to be willing to understand, go forward and be accepting and make an informed, logical, reasonable, scientific sometime decision, what is best for the students and the community and the school district, prescribable and thrivable, actually.
Thank you, Darren and Kelly.
I think the best way to address differences between school board members or school board members and administration is to come in with an open mind. I mean, there are definitely decisions like Judy's retiring is put in her retirement. Do we all agree to vote to let her retire? Yes, we're all on board. But there's going to be many topics where we're not going to agree, and that doesn't mean that one is right and the other isn't. It's important to listen to the different reasons, and you might see things from a different perspective. So coming in with an open mind and not your decision already made up is a huge way to avoid those huge conflicts. Between the board and administration, again, listening and hearing the administration's reason. We come to a meeting a couple of times a month, little meetings, committee meetings. The administration is with each other and with the children and getting phone calls from parents on a daily basis. So listen and see if you can, you know, see things from a different perspective.
Thank you, Kelly. We're moving on to the next question, and for this round, Scott, you're going to go first. How would you work to ensure that student discipline is fair and fairly administered? Are you concerned about the criminalization of students with disciplinary issues?
I am concerned about criminalization of students. I, I, I do not believe that, that schools are a proper place for law enforcement. I think there can be issues where that's, where that's called for, but I don't think that happens nearly as often as we think it does. I think students need to be treated with more respect and with some more knowledge about their where they are in their lives and with their home lives and, and we need to work more with them with mental health and feeling safe in the schools.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, you're gonna have to read that again. If you could explain it, it would probably I think we'll start by reading it.
How would you work to ensure that student discipline is fair and fairly administered? Are you concerned about the criminalization of students with disciplinary issues?
I think we have guidelines. I think we have policies. I think as long as they're fair and the decisions were made correctly and age appropriate, I think we could curtail some of that. Like I said, the policy says this, this happened, do that to all age appropriately. The criminalization is probably not something that I want my kid around in school, to be honest with you. Depending on the age of the person, I don't, yeah, law enforcement, the liaisons are great. I, I don't have any issues with the liaisons being in the right place. But criminalization is kind of a hard word for me to accept in a school setting. I don't from small school drumming. I mean, the Ashland's not a big city, and I just can't fathom. I should go and sit in some classrooms, I guess. Maybe given the opportunity, I will, because that doesn't sound right.
Thank you, Darren and Kelly. Yes, I can. How would you work to ensure that student discipline is fair and fairly administered? Are you concerned about the criminalization of students with disciplinary issues?
As far as working to make sure that discipline is fair, I think that's why we have policies. If you, we need to follow our policies regardless of how many times that parent called you and says their kid shouldn't be, shouldn't have this punishment or that punishment. We need to treat all students that do the same thing fairly. As far as criminalization of students, I, I am a little concerned about that. There's been a huge increase in juvenile justice referrals from our school district. And it used to be 16, 17-year-olds that were, were being referred to the juvenile justice system, and it's now 13, 12, 14-year-olds that are being referred. So it's starting a lot younger. We, we can't hide from it. We can't run from it. It's happening. It's, it's in our schools, and we have to keep our students safe. So I, I am concerned with the, with our kids being referred to the justice system. Yeah.
Thank you.
So I guess from the perspective of a board member and how I would ensure something along the line, you know, that really goes back to staying on that high level of governance where, you know, we ensure that our policies are in place when certain things occur, that our staff is well-trained, that we're able to provide that trauma-informed care to our staff so that they can understand when a student is acting out in class, that it's not what is wrong with the student. It's what happened to the student. And there's a shift in thinking. We have done a lot of work around this. We've done a really good job in creating an aware and very sensitive community that knows that these students are acting out for reasons beyond their control in many cases. I do believe that relationships are key to taking some of that pain away from those students, helping them to create trust. And that's something that we can't, as board members, create, we can encourage.
Thank you, Jessica. We're moving on to a new question. And for this round, if I'm not mistaken, let me just double-check my notes here. Darren, you're going first this time.
I believe that's true.
What do you think our district can do to better encourage belonging and positive relationships between students from diverse backgrounds?
One more time.
What do you think our district can do to better encourage belonging and positive relationships between students from different backgrounds?
Teach them. Teach them about the backgrounds. Inform them of why things are the way they are and what they would want to learn from their friends. You know, early, I don't want to use the word intervention, but early acknowledgement is, is the key to all of that. I think that we would need to can you repeat it? I got time or no? Just two sentences, one sentence.
I'm just double-checking which question we're on. There we go. What do you think our district can do to better encourage belonging and positive relationships between students from diverse backgrounds?
Right. To, to teach them, make sure that they all feel welcome, loved, safe. Have, have some open discussions with them, age appropriate, of course, to help them understand, because understanding is knowledge. And if you don't understand, you'll never, never move past that and move forward.
Thank you, Darren. Kelly, the question is to you.
Can you repeat it one more time? Yes, I'm sure you're probably after you've
What do you think our district can do to better encourage belonging and positive relationships between students from diverse backgrounds?
I think start educating our students young. Start educating them and getting them around students from different backgrounds. I think when we wait till kids are in middle school or high school to be around people, students of different backgrounds, it's, it's already too late. They already have, have a perceived notion from their home or wherever, from their friends, wherever it might be. And I also think educating families, a lot of it starts at home with what they hear from their parents and their siblings or their grandparents or aunts and uncles, whoever they live with. So educating them young and educating our families, I think, would go a long way in getting all our students to feel belong and accepted.
Thank you, Kelly.
From a district perspective, I think something that we can encourage is, or, you know, seek out would be hiring and looking for those diverse backgrounds throughout our staff. When children see someone that looks like them or is someone that they can relate to, they find that sense of place, they find that sense of connection, and that's something that we can encourage. You know, I've been kind of excited to see more male figures in some of our younger grade levels. I think it's really important, you know, for young men to see that or for a student of Native American descent to see a teacher that they really connect with. And that's something that, from a board level, we can work on. I think, you know, again, promoting ways of incorporating lots of diverse learning, cultural things into our schools. We already do a lot of really wonderful things. And I think sometimes we need to celebrate that out a little bit more to the community, because often if you've gotten a few steps away from the school district, you don't have a student connected anymore. You might miss that we're doing some really neat things in our buildings already.
Thank you, Jessica.
Well, like everything else that we're talking about this evening and teaching our kids, it all falls to the teachers. The teachers need to teach, the teachers need to be inclusive. The teachers need to teach our students how to love and empathy and all this kind of stuff. And that works great. But the teachers need to be supported to do that. They need to understand that that's a goal of the district. They need to, there needs to be a top-down push for this kind of, of work. So it can't just be, oh, teachers, go do this. They need support doing it. They need training. They need to know that the school district, it's how important it is from the school district's perspective to have our students learn this stuff in the classroom. Important that it comes from the top.
Thank you, Scott. We had several questions in Uh, several questions in the area of LGBTQ students. And they're all a little nuanced differently, so may seem like. Getting repetitive in the questioning, but because they all have slightly different nuances to them, I'm gonna ask the question. I'm not trying to be repetitive on the issue. For this round of questions, Kelly, you will be beginning. Do you support policies or programs that will encourage safeguard and otherwise support and protect our LGBTQ students? If so, what specific policies or programs do you support? Do you support policies or programs that will encourage safeguard and otherwise support and protect? Our LGBTQ students? If so, what specific policies or programs do you support?
I support anything that's going to help a child or a student feel more welcome in the school and in our community. Um, being that we have all these questions about the LGBTQ community sets off an alarm in my head saying clearly we have a problem. But I think they are, they do have. From taking my son to learn about going to high school, we did learn that there is an LGBTQ. Group or network in the school, in the high school, which is a start. But I do think we do need to educate our students and our, and our community. About what that all entail. Everybody hears LGBTQ, but they don't know what it all entail. So some education on that would go a long way. And yes, I would support any program in order to do that, to make. Every student feel more accepted. And I think again, supporting that community like we support. A football team or a basketball team or a show choir would go a long way.
Well, I think creating opportunities for students in our schools to find a place that they belong, where that be. In band, choir, drama, um, clubs of various organizations throughout. Um, Ashland offers our students a lot of really wonderful chances to participate in many different ways. Um, and I think, you know, specific to a policy, I can't say that I could name a specific policy that pertains to LGBTQ. Communities in our schools. Um, but again, that, that comes back to those conversations around do we need to create a new policy? Is this a, a discussion that we need to put on an agenda because there's a situation that occurred or there's an incident? That is triggering us to have a conversation around safety, security, wellbeing, acceptance. Um, all of those things that we would want for any of our students, it's, it's putting a label on one particular group. Um, but I think we should be treating all of our students regardless of their background and beliefs in the same manner.
Thank you, Jessica. Do you support policies or programs that will encourage safeguard and otherwise support and protect? Our LGBTQ students? If so, what specific policies or programs do you support?
Yeah, I, I support policies. That would support this. Uh, this group of students. Um, specific policies, I, I don't know. Um, I think there needs to be conversation with that specific. Um, group of kids and their families. To have some idea of what, what the problems are that the policies need to solve. And again, there seems to be some, some specific problems with LGBTQ community in our schools, which is very frustrating. And uh, it seems like the school board's gonna need to get to the bottom of that.
Darren.
One more time.
Do you support policies or programs that will encourage safeguard and otherwise support and protect our LGBTQ students? If so, what specific policies or programs do you support?
To, to the first part of the question, absolutely. It, it all comes down to community and safety and wellbeing and enriching and making people feel included. And making them feel part of the group. Just like you would have a ski, I mean, you could have ski clubs, band clubs, LGBT clubs, to give them a certain comfort level, at least in that certain space. And get those spaces together. Um, the one thing, I don't know anything about the policies the school has in place. I, 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 I would obviously go into that with an open mind, but I can tell you that I support safety and inclusion, acceptance and kindness for everyone. And I don't think that should be limited to whatever you are or want to be or choose to be. We, we're all the same. We're all in the same ship. We gotta steer in the right direction and, and go from there. There's no reason to. Make people feel that they're left out. People are people. Should be treated with kindness and respect, in my opinion, so.
Thank you, Darren. I think we have time for another question on this topic. And sort of merge these two questions together. And Jessica, you will be responding first. Recently, many districts have adopted policies that undermine the privacy and safety of LGBTQ plus students. Under the guise of parental rights. Do you support or oppose these measures such as requiring signed parental consent for students to use preferred pronouns? Or a policy of outing LGBTQ children to their parent?
It's a really complex question and for many reasons. Obviously, the age of the student, I think, plays in pretty heavily to this and. Um, I have several friends who have children who are in situations where they're choosing a different name and. They would like to be referred to as a different pronoun and those types of conversations are very personal and very family oriented. But in not every situation that family is maybe is accepting of those. So there's a lot of nuance. There's a lot of. Um, subtlety and a broad question like that. Um, obviously, we want our students to feel that they can trust their teachers. They can trust and have a safe place to express themselves. And throughout their school day. Um, I know, you know, parents play a big role and I think it's a, it's the role of the school to navigate. Sort of a conversation around that, but setting hard and fast rules, I think we get into some. Some dangerous territory that I think we want to create a place where students can feel trust is at the front.
Thank you, Jessica. Scott. I can, I'm gonna ask that you silence your phone in the audience. Thank you. Recently, many districts have adopted policies that undermine the privacy and safety of LGBTQ plus students. I'll start. Recently, many districts have adopted policies and that undermine the privacy and safety of LGBTQ plus students. Under the guise of parental rights. Do you support or oppose these measures such as requiring signed parental consent for students to use preferred pronouns? Or a policy of outing LGBTQ children to their parent?
I guess I don't see a place for district-wide policy. I think this is a, uh, an issue that needs to begin with the teachers. Students need to feel, um, safe in their classrooms and our teachers need to be. Given the latitude to, uh, make sure their students do feel safe and make those decisions. Depending on, uh, teachers, teachers know their students and they know their students' families. And they are best, the best people to make the decision as to, um, when to include, uh, families in conversation. Oh, how big a deal it is for the student, um, how it's gonna be. Accepted at the family level and how to keep that student learning and safe in the, in their classroom.
Thank you, Scott. Darren.
Guess what? One more time.
Recently, many districts have adopted policies that undermine the privacy and safety of LGBTQ plus students. Under the guise of parental rights. Do you support or oppose these measures such as requiring signed parental consent? For students to use preferred pronouns or a policy of outing LGBTQ children to their parents?
Lot there. I don't, I, I think the decision to, if the worst thing that my kid ever did was change a pronoun. I'd still be proud of him no matter what. There's a lot of other things that can go wrong in a kid's life. Or go in any direction. If, if a person is contributing member of society and doing what they need to do, God bless them all. They have no issues with any of that. As, as, as far as parental consent, I, I would say no thank you to that. Um, I think the decision to approach your parents has to be one of the most scary things any person could ever do. I've heard so many stories that it's unbelievable and gets back to the mental health and there's a whole bunch of kids making some bad decisions. Because they're afraid of just that and school should be safe. And, and, and if your parents aren't as accepting as your school and your classmates and your community that you want to hang out with, hang out with those people. You, eventually you'll have enough support. You're gonna say, you know what, I can do this and, and you're gonna go do it on your own time. And it should never be, ever be forced on a person when that time should happen.
Thank you, Darren. And Kelly? Can you repeat it one more time? Recently, many districts have adopted policies that undermine the privacy and safety of LGBTQ plus students. Under the guise of parental rights. Do you support or oppose these measures such as requiring signed parental consent? For students to use preferred pronouns or a policy of outing LGBTQ children to their parent?
Um, I, I would have to say that I oppose that. I think schools are a place for students to feel safe and if a student. Doesn't want their parents to know, like Darren said, that's a very scary thing to tell your parents, something that you know they don't want to hear. Or you think they don't want to hear. Um, and I don't think that's. Um, our place to out anybody. I think that's at their time and at their place that they want to do that. I do think it is our job to be there for them so they have someone to talk to and support them. And we can encourage a relationship with their parents or grandparents or whoever it is that they plan to come out to. And I mean, if a child wants to be called, you know, he, she, Scooby Doo, I, is, if, if they're happy in class and they're learning. That, I, I don't think that we need to call home and say anything to any parent. Um, if my child felt safe in school and I didn't know something was going on, I would just be glad that they're safe.
Thank you, Kelly. We're gonna close the question and answer period and we're going to go now into our one-minute voting statements. And we're gonna start with Scott.
Well, I was really nervous to come and do this. Uh, like I said, when I started, I really care about public education and I care about this community and this, I was very interested in, in. Uh, running for this and getting this position, um, but man, I'm way more interested now. The questions are so interesting and thought provoking and. Just. The, the issues and, and. The conversations that, that would be had in, in, and around these issues and the good that we could do. Is just exciting and, uh, I would. Be really happy to, uh. Represent this community on the school board. Thank you for having.
Well, I'm excited to see so many people came out tonight and I appreciate that we took the time to be here and thanks to the legal women voters for giving us an opportunity to put ourselves out here. I think it's super important that we have informed voters on our local elections. It's probably some of the most important elections that we can participate in. Um, some of the most important times that I've really spent my adult life have been serving this whole district on the board. Um, I've seen the positivity that we can create when we take a chance and we come together as a community and I think if you. Had a chance to be in any of our facilities, since we've done a lot of improvements, um, just the, the pride and the excitement. On our students' faces and, um, I had the opportunity to work in our high school last year for about six months and just watching people walk in that building and go. Wow, this is a really cool school. And then our kids are like, yeah, it is a really cool school. And I didn't see that from our students when I first started on our board, so positive change. That's why I'm here.
Thank you, Jessica.
Um, I just, again, thank you all for coming out here tonight. This is a great turnout and everybody who's listening via Zoom, thank you for listening. Um, and the legal women voters, thank you so much for putting this on. I am a true believer in democracy and I love that there are four of us. Out here, up here and that when you, when the voters get to their voting place, they're gonna see four names and they get to choose the best, the two that they want. I, for me, that's really important. Um, I'm, I feel like I'm a well-educated person. Um, I have children in the school, I'm invested in our community and I, I have a strong voice for. Um, people who don't have a strong voice, whether that be teachers, women, minority children. And I feel like I would be a good candidate to represent our students and our community, all students and everyone in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Darren.
My future vision for the school district would be to enhance a stable environment that is inclusive, transparent, fiscally responsible and with strong ties to the community. I would like to see Ashland area thrive and equality school is one of the roots on which the city should grow. A blossoming school and community will exponentially grow in synchronicity. It really is about the kids and their future, which is our future. Thank you very much for this opportunity and I would like, this is awesome. You guys, I, I was so impressed. I was anxious. I wouldn't say nervous because I've been in places like this before. But my watch went off twice today with a high heart rate. So I'm like, wow. So, no, I, I don't think the Ashland area people will, I, I think you have solid choices. I, I think I'm looking forward to it. And like Scott said, this is motivated me even more hearing what the community wants rather than trying to figure out what should I be preparing for. You know, just be who you are, be true to yourself and, and use good decisions and keep an open-minded heart.
Thank you, Darren. So that ends our forum for this evening. Just a reminder, the election for the Ashland School Board is on April fourth. And the League of Women Voters urges you to vote in your local election. Tonight, you're can, you've heard from all of your candidates for the school board. Are your candidates are Scott Virchell, Darren Fredericks, Kelly Medei and Jessica Kurgulsky. Thanks again to the candidates and to you, the audience, both here in person and on Zoom for your participation. The League thanks you for your interest in local elections. And my thanks to our lead crew who helped organize and run this forum. So good night, everybody. Go vote.